Testing, yeah. Oh. Turn on your ears. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Okay. All right.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Friday session for the May State Board meeting. And I'd be remiss if I did not recognize Mother's Day in two days. So happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers and others who play that role in the room. We have some short day of reports, but some good information to get out to us and to others today. And so we're going to start with Dr. Hernandez. And we have a couple of more co-op evaluations. Mike, are these the last two we should expect or is there a few more next month?
These are numbers 11 and 12. We'll have 13, 14, and 15 next month. And so these two were Southeast Co-op and Wilbur Mills. And so just a couple of things I want to say that I thought these two co-ops that we're doing were kind of neat. And seeing a lot of this type of work across the state, you know, one, on Southeast's side, that they've really embraced the thought of doing things with finance and helping their member districts with finance. So they, out of their local funds, have hired a financial advisor that works with all their member districts free of charge. But he also goes out and works with other districts across the state. And Wilbur Mills, one of the things that they identified was a struggle with math curriculum. And so what they did is, I don't know if a lot of you know Dr. Linda Griffith that worked at UCA, she's actually one of my professors, they had been working a contract with her to help member districts develop math curriculum. That way it can, you know, live on past just the teachers leaving and things like that. So, you know, co-ops are trying to be responsive to those types of things. But we do have, we are completed. We have finished all 15 co-op evaluations and those final three will come next month. And we have a plan next week to get together with the team and start to identify, what did we see, things that went well, what are things that we need to modify? And then also start to bring in the department folks and the co-op directors and TCCs to talk through what they feel like the process should be going forward. And that may look like every year doing three different co-ops. That way it's on a cycle as opposed to waiting, like we did this time and doing all 15 in one year, which was fun, but it was a trek, so.
Ms. Hocken?
Is there anything in particular that you would like to draw our attention to with the process in general or a co-op in particular?
You know, so far, the one thing that we've seen a lot of is just a lot of variation in the responses around, you know, needs assessment type questions and then also user satisfaction. And so, you know, we've talked to co-ops a lot and we've already seen a big uptick in the amount of responses, some that may have had really low responses last year with the new year of having a new tool and survey thing. And then overall, getting that information and bringing it to the level of the board where the superintendents of that co-op know this is important. So we've seen things that have gone from, you know, 100 responses up to 1,000 responses already for this year when they're doing their surveys and asking questions. So that's probably a big part that, you know, we feel like it's very important because they need to know what their member districts need or they're including all members of their, and doing more of a, not necessarily just the anecdotal, hey, I need this or I need that, but actually have something that's written that they can track and make sure needs are being met. And they do a good job of that, but, you know, sometimes when we're doing the evaluation, it's, we're looking for evidence of those things and it's hard to capture a conversation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions over here? All right. All right. Thank you. We look forward to a couple more next month. All right. Ms. Cochran, you are up with our Teacher of the Year report.
Good morning. So this month's stop on our journey to educational equity is well-rounded education. And I'm sure, of course, you all know that I'm a Spanish teacher, and I'm sure you know all of the benefits that are touted of foreign language instruction and being multilingual, the test scores, the critical thinking skills, all of the amazing benefits of being multilingual. So today, I want to, I've brought with me Ms. Jenny Kilgore, and she is the president of the Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association. A couple of years ago, I was named, along with a colleague of mine, Will Davis, to the advocacy committee of AFLTA, Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association. And they told us, you have one goal, and that is to develop and make official a state seal of biliteracy. And fortunately, we were very young and naive and had no idea what we were doing, so we forged ahead and we learned a whole lot from our national organization. And we reached out to Arc TESOL to form a joint biliteracy award for the state of Arkansas. And so what Ms. Kilgore is going to do is she's going to explain what that is. And last year, you met some of our students who had received that award. And she's going to tell you all of the incredible things that have happened in our state since I started my year of service, really. So, Ms. Kilgore.
Thank you so much, Courtney. So, yes, my name is Jennifer Kilmore. I'm from West Memphis, Arkansas. And I am the president of the Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association. And today, I'm representing that association and Arc TESOL, the Arkansas Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages. And together, these two organizations have been very passionate about establishing an Arkansas seal of biliteracy, as we did not want to be one of the very few states in America that has no process started for a seal. Currently, there are 33 states and the District of Columbia who have established official state seals of biliteracy. What that means is it's a process and a form of recognition and award to students who have achieved and proven proficiency in English and at least one other language. That could be modern languages, classical American Sign Language, or Native American languages. In Arkansas, we have recognized and awarded seals of biliteracy in Spanish, French, German, Chinese, Japanese, and Portuguese so far. Hopefully, many more to come. So just Courtney was tasked with establishing the seal in Arkansas. And this joint committee was formed about two and a half years ago. So we've been working for two and a half years doing research, speaking with other states, advocacy groups, and national leaders on what that means to establish a seal of biliteracy in a state and what does that mean for Arkansas. So we've compared kind of our state to similar states and seen what they've done and how they have awarded this seal. And we came up with a set of guidelines and procedures and acceptable pieces of evidence of proficiency, as students do have to prove that proficiency. So we started the process and piloted in January of last year. And the first two award recipients received their awards here, and that was May of last year. We piloted with Springdale High School, Harbor High School in Springdale, Fayetteville High School, and Silom Springs. And those high schools were chosen because they are already in proficiency-oriented classrooms and were producing large numbers of highly proficient students. So we knew we had a base of very deserved recipients there, and they could help us kind of establish what this process was going to be like. In January of 2018, we had our process refined, we made some adjustments, and we opened up to the entire state. So currently, we have awarded 350 awards of seals of biliteracy across the state of Arkansas in German, Chinese, Japanese, Portuguese, Spanish, and French. So these students have taken a form of a proficiency test, submitted applications with test scores, and received that award. And it has been as far south as Nashville, Arkansas, and as far east as Cersei. And we're hoping that as we go statewide and communications get out there, that more and more teachers will be interested in how they can recognize their students for proficiency achievement. So proficiency goes far beyond the classroom. It's far beyond test scores and grade point averages as Arkansas becomes more and more biliterate. There's more increased need for biliterate workers in police forces, healthcare, the schools, legal aides, and also all of the businesses in Arkansas who have parent companies in other countries or Arkansas-established businesses that serve other countries and have workers. So we have seen the need in an increase in online job postings for bilingual workers over the last 10 years. It's increased about 98 percent. So we definitely see the need in Arkansas, and we want to recognize those students for achieving those skills so they can bring them back and serve their state. So the seal of biliteracy really pats them on the back and applauds them for those endeavors and going above and beyond, and then hoping that they'll bring those skills back in and stay in Arkansas and serve our people. So with that, I would like to ask the board to consider establishing an official Arkansas seal of biliteracy in the future. That as we have set the groundwork and the foundation for what it looks like and how it can kind of work and manifest, we would like to go a step further and ask for endorsement and recognition from the board and then hopefully, future establishment of a state seal. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Rife and Stacy Smith have been working with us to kind of talk about different pathways to an official state seal of biliteracy. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And then like Ms. Kilgore said, we would love to, in the future, work with the board to make this official so that all the schools and districts in our state will know that this is a very good thing for their students, for the businesses in the community as well, and will consider supporting their students in trying for the seal of biliteracy.
So at present, the process is that at individual district level, that make a decision to place a seal on the diploma, how many districts have made that decision? Do you know?
I have it written down.
You gave the list, but I couldn't, I think-
I have a small list on our press release that I can pull up. I actually think it's on my phone. But right now, the districts aren't making the decision. The process has been through the committee that we are awarding the certificate. Because it's not an official seal, districts aren't sure if they have the liberty to do this or what this means, which is why we're asking for an official one. That would kind of make a collective definition and tell districts, this is a good thing, this means the same thing across the state. So mostly, right now, it is in Northwest Arkansas is where we're seeing it. That's where most of the communication is. But I can get you that number.
No, that's fine. But I was just trying to get clear on the process. So it really has been that individual districts have worked with the association to kind of develop-
Currently, it's at the teacher level more. So as teachers are attending AFLTA functions and advocacy meetings, it's really at the teacher level, and districts are becoming aware of this, but that's where y'all come in, is we need more district-level support to support those teachers and students.
Okay. All right. Questions? Any questions over here? Ms. Rife?
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, it's a pleasure to meet you, Ms. Kilmore. We've been exchanging calls and emails for some time now, and so this is actually our first time meeting in person. And obviously, it was through this process that, amongst others, that I became such a fan of Ms. Cochran, which is why I was not surprised when she became Teacher of the Year, because I'd seen her leadership exhibited in many ways. This was just one of the many spaces Ms. Cochran's offered leadership in a space. So first and foremost, I want to thank both of you ladies on this. And for everyone's purposes, my phone has blown up this last month, to make sure that in preparation for this conversation today, that we'd be here. And so again, reaffirming the passion that our teachers have for every student. So first and foremost, I just have to thank you both for your leadership. And for our colleagues on the board, then, just as your questions lend itself, Dr. Barth, it hasn't been a clear-cut process. So we know that support is there with teachers. We know that some superintendents are aware and things like this. And so that's why I'd actually like to invite Dr. Smith, Stacy Smith, to come up to speak because we've been really, and again, appreciating the leadership of the department here in trying to think about what are the options. I've appreciated the commitment to this board has made in so many different ways in making sure our students are college and career-ready. And as these ladies have laid out, it's an equity issue, but it's also about us fulfilling our broader mission, right, of making sure that our children here are competitive even for the jobs that are here in Arkansas. And we know that whether it's our hospitals up in Northwest Arkansas, who literally call me every week, Niree, I don't have bilingual nurses, right, and can't fill spots, or whether it's Walmart that wants our students to be able to work on the international platform and needs these bilingual individuals. So what can we do in a broader sense? And I thought Ms. Smith did just such an amazing job of thinking through how this might include in our ESSA process. And I would like you, if you don't mind, to share that with our colleagues. But then otherwise, if there is an opportunity here for us to take an action, and I know you've advised us a little bit about what that might look like, Ms. Smith, so if you would speak to that a little, what that could look like. But I would appreciate the leadership of this board for us to demonstrate that we are backing our teachers, we're backing our students, and that we do something proactive before the request that's been made to us today.
All right. So Stacy Smith. I first heard about this from Tricia Kerr, our ESL director, and she works closely with Arkansas TESOL. And one thing I wanted to point out that I don't know was said earlier about students having to demonstrate to get the seal for biliteracy, it's more than just speaking, okay, and understanding. They're actually having to demonstrate that they can read, write, two languages, but they're reading, writing, I mean, the whole, it encompasses all the skills, listening. It's more than just being able to communicate orally. So when I first heard about it, we started talking about it and thinking in terms of ESSA and what this looks like for us moving forward, we're constantly trying to ask ourselves through the ESSA plan and for students, what are the skills students need to be successful after they graduate from high school? And one of the areas that we've heard lots from the community has been about industry certificates or acknowledging certificates, technical certificates, when students can demonstrate or have earned through coursework. And for me, this may fit in that category as we move forward, looking at skills that students can demonstrate where they would show, this is a skill that I have acquired and that workforce in Arkansas recognizes it as something when they're interviewing kids or looking at resumes. So to me, it's bigger than just saying this is a seal that can go on a diploma. I think that if we need to look beyond just a seal on the diploma, and we need to think about how can this actually impact workforce in Arkansas. We've been working with Arkansas Career Education to narrow their industry certificate list down so that hopefully, within, I mean, when we go back and read ESSA, that was one of our future indicators about trying to bring in industry credentials within that process. I think this may have a place in that discussion about being able to demonstrate that. I also think with the legislation that was passed this last year by Representative Douglas about competency and being able to demonstrate proficiency, I think there's areas of conversation there that this could fall into. Do I have all the details worked out for you this morning? I don't. Okay. I don't. I've just got very excited people talking to me about this, and I do think that there's a place here. And so as far as an actual action by this board, I don't know that there is one right now, but I would definitely accept the charge from this board to continue to look into this, making sure to pull people together and groups together to discuss, how does this fit in, especially with our future plans in ESSA? I definitely think it fits. So as far as this board recognizing and encouraging the department to encourage districts to recognize the seal, now, right now, they're submitting their demonstration to your, the AFTL, is it AFLTA group? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that Arc TESOL Joint Committee.
Okay. So if we get to a point where we actually can tie this into our ESSA plan, then we'll have to have a more formal process and formal documentation process so that it can count within the plan. So therefore, those take some time to work out. That's some systems pieces with Dr. Saunders' group. How do we start collecting that information and that data to verify? So there's some pieces there to think about as we go through, but I definitely think it is a worthy thing for this board to say this is something that we would support.
Great. Any further comments? Ms. Hocken?
Put it on the action agenda and discuss and say, we like this, we hope you do. If you do, put it on it. Or is it a matter of saying, if you, if this child, student qualifies, you will put it on there?
I think what I was hearing from Ms. Smith is some commitment to continue this work, figuring out the right pathway. Obviously, we can't take any action today. But, you know, it does sound like it could be appropriate for us to consider a resolution to endorse movement in that direction in the future.
And then would we have to come up with, like, it's not a big expense- And then would we have to come up with, like, it's not a big expense, but then, you know, send out the seals to them to take off and put on the diploma? Or will it be like a stamp kind of seal or some way to acknowledge it? Is that?
I think that would be several steps down the way, but.
So many different states have different ways that they've implemented this, and we've looked at every single one of them. So in the event that, you know, if you wanted more details on what that could look like and kind of choose a direction for how it's delivered or the process through the state, it is done in 33 different ways. So there's a lot of different areas or angles to come in from.
Sure. Dr. Pfeffer reminded me of something that we had talked about before, too. As we continue this conversation on high school pathways and looking at conversation of where we're heading with, you know, graduation and students being prepared and ready, the idea that this could lead to a pathway, and this would be that credential in the end that you're actually getting. And so you're working towards that. And this is something that students, when they're talking about their student success plans in eighth grade with their teachers, this is something they're planning for. So I definitely think there is room for this in part of the workforce in our state. So just another thing.
Ms. Newton?
Dr. Barth, I can see this becoming much more than just a seal. And so I would really rather us not rush into it. I would rather us to get Ms. Smith and her department to look into it and see, you know, how we can develop it and really make it into something that, you know, that would really have some weight to it, you know, like the industry certification, that sort of thing. And so, you know, if, my daddy always says, when you get in too big a hurry, sometimes you make mistakes. And so, you know, I would like to take our time and make sure that we develop that pathway and we do the best good for our students. And so I can see it becoming something bigger than just a seal, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Ms. Reif?
No, thank you. And thank you for that, Ms. Newton, and Ms. Smith as well, for that additional thinking on that. And I, having, again, only briefly worked with Ms. Higginmore and more with Ms. Cochran, I have to imagine Aflin Arctisol would not mind seeing this being even bigger than just a seal. But at the same time, I do want to make sure that we don't lose the opportunity to give visibility to this issue now and encourage districts to be thinking about this while we on our end, vis-à-vis ESA, right, create a pathway. And I'm just wondering, so that these women as well can feel, right, that their time today had an impact, if as part of our recognitions for next month, if we could once again invite some of the students back, maybe some sort of conversation, you know, when we have press here and, you know, through the visibility that our action agenda gets, that we highlight this so that districts can be thinking about this for next year, superintendents can be encouraged, that we can also be able to communicate back to the broader public that we are working through a process so where, so that people know that this exists, right, and that we're making a commitment to working on it. I'm open to other ideas of what that would look like. That's one that just emerges. But I know I'm going to be at the graduation this coming Tuesday in Springdale for several of these students. I was just informed yesterday that I'll be handing out the diplomas this year, which I'm really excited about. And so maybe there's some opportunity to ask some of them to come down again as part of our recognitions and continue to give visibility and affirmation of our support. But again, Ms. Smith and others, I'm open to suggestions on what that looks like.
And one thing I want to note is we're on board as far as where this is heading. And I do think there are things and actions that we can do as Learning Services Division to support this now. For example, letting schools know about the opportunity right now to submit. There are times that we have, you know, working with other organizations, put out informations to schools right now to say, hey, in case you didn't know about this, and not put all that on their shoulders to make sure schools know about it. So we can send out information directly to schools, letting schools know about this, getting them information about how to prepare a student to submit their information and their work. So there are, those are things right now that Learning Services can immediately begin doing that don't require necessarily an action from this board.
Okay. So did you, any, did you have a comment? Okay. So where I'm, just to tie this up, what I'm hearing is that next month, trying to identify some way to continue the visibility of this issue and this possibility. Secondly, the commitment from the department to continue examining more formal, formal action in the future that would make this more universal, create some consistency across the state, et cetera, work in collaboration with the existing associations, and that at a time in the future, that may, that could lead to a need for action from this board, but that that is not the immediate step. Is that the, is that kind of where things, does that sound like a good conclusion? Ms. Reif?
If I could just ask one follow-up question. Thank you, Dr. Barth. I know this has been a complex process, as it has been for all of us, in trying to figure out what exactly we're asking and what would be most helpful at this time. I'm just wondering, Ms. Smith, if it would be helpful at all for us to be able to indicate or take an action of this being part of our upcoming, you know, ESA process? If that's something that needs affirmation at our level, if that would support you in this effort, or is that duplicitous because of your already stated commitment to look into it?
Yeah, and this is where I would probably, with either the attorneys or Commissioner King, I don't, so we take our charge. When you guys ask us to investigate or look in things or to, you know, do some research, we take that seriously. And that's what I'm hearing today from this board, that this is something that you support, that this is something that you would like us to dig into and look at. I know that this is something that Tricia Kerr with my, that unit has worked with and is passionate about and feels like this is something we need to work on. As far as within the work with ESA and those continuous conversations, I think today through our minute, I mean, I'm not sure what the charge needs to be. I don't know that there's, there's not an action right now to say, we're going to make this a seal for Arkansas Department of Defense because we don't have a process for that today. But to give me the charge to go and continue to look at this so that I can bring something back to you, I think.
That's what I, that's what I have heard today. Ms. Reif?
And as it relates to ESA, we just have to keep in mind that any of those components have to be accessible across all districts comparable, you know. So if that is something that may be a future, you know, right now, it's not available to all students in all districts. So before it could be included in ESA, it would have to become available to all students in all districts. So that would be a consideration on the ESA work. However, as it relates to the broader work of continuous cycle of inquiry for schools, which is the broader goal of our ESA plan, it certainly fits into what we would want them to do for well-rounded, prepared students. And that's something that we would definitely want to encourage and nudge our schools to be looking at.
And for us to begin to figure out, how do we do, start doing this as a data collection piece, and how do we make it for all schools so that we can submit it as something like that?
Okay. All right. So more likely next month in terms of awareness, more in the future in terms of something that may, would be a more formal movement. Is everybody comfortable with where we are? Okay. Thank y'all very much. Thank you so much for driving over this morning.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Chairman, may I ask Ms. Cochran a question before she sits down? Does the former Teachers of the Year and the current ones, do y'all have like an organization? I've been thinking more and more about the need for mentors in lots of districts where they may not either have someone who's ready to mentor, or they've got more people needing mentoring than they do. Is there some way we could do, like maybe work with Dr. Saunders on some sort of like call-out to teachers across the state? Are you willing to mentor, devote a little bit of time each week by phone or Skype or however they choose to do it, or share your ideas to see if we, is that something you all can take a lead in, or is that something that we need to just work with Dr. Saunders?
Along with the Milken Award winners, the Arkansas Teachers of the Year have an organization, the Arkansas Excellent Educators Network. And Ms. Abels is in charge of that. So she could probably, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Well, good morning. Yes, we have a group called the Arkansas Exemplary Educators Network. And currently, we meet with the Commissioner twice a year to talk about what's going on in the agency, education in general in Arkansas, and really just kind of give those teachers a voice at the table to represent all teachers around the state. And it's important that they know what's going on at the agency. So around the state, as conversations come up, they can say, oh, well, if you didn't know, at the agency, they're working on this. And so I would love to sit down and visit with you about some ideas that you have. As I finished my first year in this position, I am trying to evaluate what's working and what's not, what we can do differently to better utilize that group. So I would love to sit down and visit with you about that.
Well, I really don't have any more other than what I said, which was just a list of, you know, here are the first-grade teachers, the kindergarten teachers, the fifth grade, the science teachers, whatever, the bilingual teachers. And here are, here are the names of some people you can contact for a mentor, or the principal can say, I'm going to find you a mentor in, you know, Melbourne's a great district, they've got a terrific teacher there, I've got a first-year teacher over in ICC, and that way they can be mentored and not necessarily by someone who's in their own building, but just mentored in general. And I don't, I don't want to make it like a big complicated thing, just quick, easy access that we make the principals and superintendents aware of, Dr. Ola.
You know, we do have the Teacher Leader Advisory Group, and I feel like this might be a great opportunity to kind of put all of these teacher leaders together and maybe feature them through our website, what their strengths are, and really utilize those teachers in a bigger way.
I don't know if you were watching yesterday, but Dollar Way was, she was talking about funding, and I was going to go, well, most really good teachers are willing to do, like from a different district, they don't have to get money for it, they just, you know, you get, a lot of things in life are just self-satisfaction. So, and you don't have to sign up if you don't want to, you know, be self-satisfied. But it just seems like something now that we have this, my student, my child, and so much good that Dr. Saunders's department has done, that I just thought, hey, you know, maybe here's another opportunity. What do you think, Dr. Ola?
Yes, ma'am. Jeremy Ola, Educator Effectiveness. The model that you're speaking of is the exact model that the co-ops with the new mentoring program we have in the regional co-ops, they are setting up mentoring for three years for novice teachers, but they're utilizing their year-two, year-three, and teacher leaders, as Megan just mentioned, to mentor these first-year teachers. And so, and it's not just, with this current model, it's just not teachers mentoring teachers who are in their school or in their districts, but more of on a regional basis. And so we've started that process and have received positive feedback from co-ops now, and especially, more specifically, from first-year teachers about the, how beneficial it's been. And of course, principals have stated that they feel like this mentoring model is more proactive than the one-on-one that we've had in the past.
So there's nothing new under the sun, right?
Oh, we'll continue to move forward and support teachers, both new and practicing.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Zook, I wanted to add one more thing. And there are teachers that are getting approval from their district for professional development to go visit other teachers' classrooms in other areas of the state, and to go spend the day and learn from them and tour their school and see what they're doing. And I just think that's a really innovative and a good way to network and learn. So I wanted to share that as well, so.
Of course, you know me, I don't want the teacher to ever be out of her classroom. So some of this I'd like to see done online, not with necessary visit and a substitute and all the things that involve, so, thank you.
I will, I'll push back a little bit on that. I mean, there are times when being away from the benefits of being away from the classroom can be great, and especially if it is targeted at a kind of professional development that really is going to have long-term payoff. I think we probably agree that it, that.
Everything is.
All things are not equal. Yes, yes. And that's what I do like about some of the shifts and how we're, what teachers can get credit for in terms of professional development, things that are much more individualized to their needs. And I think that's the best kind of professional development, based on my own experience.
And I think that's where the department, the board, the legislate, I think everybody has slowly sometimes moved in that direction, like, we're not just going to have PD to have PD, we're not just going to check the box. So, yes, I agree.
Indeed. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Ms. Reif, and Ms. Smith, and everybody else. All right. Next up, Chair's Report. I don't have anything specific except to just kind of highlight that as we think about the start of a new year, on the board, it's time to, I think, begin thinking about what initiatives might be, we might want as a focus of our work next year. Obviously, we're continuing on student discipline issues, and I think that's going to continue. But that is a good example of something that has been an investment of energy this year, obviously, family engagement, which we'll hear about in a minute. But I would urge board members to begin thinking about, okay, what are the types of endeavors that really deserve that kind of attention? You know, ideally culminating in some action or new direction from this board at the end of that process. But I would urge us to start thinking about, what are those things for next year? And so put your, you know, in the next month or so, be thinking about that. Does anybody else have any, we'll get to the task forces and liaisons in just a second, but does anybody else have any just more generalized reports?
Just some quick information. I was, had the opportunity to speak this last month at SAU and was visiting with the President, and he told me some really good news, and I wanted to share this with Dr. Ola and Dr. Pfeffer. He said in, I think it was 2015, 2016, they had five applicants to their education program. This spring, they have 35. And so I think that's a direct effort of the things that y'all are doing in the state and things that Ms. Abels is doing with her group, just trying to get out good news. And so I just, I just wanted to do a happy dance, but I just thank y'all for what y'all are doing because it's starting to make a difference.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Newton. All right. Anyone, anything else? Okay, Commissioner.
Okay. So I've got three things that I want to talk to you about. I'll save the news about our students to the end. Passed out, each of you should have a packet of materials from Department of Workforce Services. You know, one of the things that Governor Hutchinson has asked his cabinet-level agencies to do is to find ways that we can work together more collaboratively, and this is a good example of that. You're all maybe probably familiar with the TANF program, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, the T program, and that's all managed, operated through Workforce Services, and there's some involvement with DHS. But what we have learned is that there are a lot of these programs that are federally funded that can go to help some of our students that are in need. Specifically, students say that you have a single mom that is still a student in high school, or dad, for that matter, that there are programs that go to help these students with the cost of childcare, with other levels of assistance, and with the goal being to keep them in school, to get them through, to get them through the high school and then on to a good start. And we've been working with them and just wanted you to know and take this opportunity to publicize that. And as you interact with your contacts, this information that's in this packet, we also have links that we will send you that Gina Wendell is working closely with the TANF team with Workforce Services. And obviously, with her former role as a school counselor, she has a very strong network within the schools of the people who are most likely to interact with students that could use these services. So we're very proud of the initial work that's happening. We are putting the D Workforce Services folks, the TANF folks, in connection with the co-ops. And I know they've already. And I know they've already had a couple of co-op presentations. And Kristy First, the TANF director there is, or coordinator at Workforce Services, has told me that she's already started getting some calls from school districts, asking, inquiring more about these services. So there, it's, it's not new. That's the thing. It's new, but it's been underutilized, because we just haven't done a very good job of getting the word out. But now that, and the great thing about it, too, is it's not just helping serve these students, but then it can extend to serve the families. And what, what their data show is that there are a number of families that need these types of services that, for whatever reason, aren't available themselves of them. So, good partnership between state agencies and would be a benefit to our students and families. Fits right in with our family and community engagement work that we're doing as well. The next item, I want to ask Lori Freino to come up. And Act 781 of 2017 provides us an opportunity to, let me, let me stop there and ask if you have any questions. I almost forgot about that. I was just trying to rush through this. Any questions on the TANF or Workforce Services partnership? Okay. All right. Act 781. Opportunity to repeal old rules or unnecessary rules. All state agencies, all boards and commissions have been tasked with the report. And I asked Lori to give you an update on our work there, timelines, and things we may be bringing back to you over the next few months.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, Lori Freino. Under Act 781, what we have done so far is initially, we had to submit by the end of last year a, an initial report that listed all of the rules that the department has, with some other information like dates they were enacted and so forth. We did do that in a timely manner. And the next step that we have is by July 1 of 2018, we have to submit a, a, that, not an initial report, but our final report. And what that is going to include is a list of all of our administrative rules we have, which of them we want to continue to enforce, and which of them we would like to repeal. And the good thing about Act 781 is it will allow us to do a wholesale appeal of, repeal of rules. You know, now, if we repeal a rule, we have to go through the entire Administrator Procedures Act process. We have to, you know, put it out for public comment. We have to do all this. This is an opportunity to look back, look at old rules that were really not, we have no reason to enforce anymore, no interest in enforcing. And it will let us go ahead and have the opportunity to repeal those as a bunch. Now, what will happen is, after this report is filed on the 1st of, of July, it is going to be assigned to a subject matter interim committee at the General Assembly. And that, that subject matter interim committee will hold public, I mean, they will hold public hearings. You know, ADE will have the opportunity to present. The public will have the opportunity to present. And they will look at this report, look at all the repeals we recommend, and see if they're willing to approve them or not. And if they approve the repeals, the repeals are immediate. We don't have to go through the process of repealing. And so, what we plan to do, what we're doing right now at ADE is we're all working together to look through all of our rules. We have a lot of rules, believe it or not. And we're looking through all the rules to determine which of them we think are no longer necessary. And those will be coming to you in a list, a list of rules that we're proposing be repealed in the June meeting. So that's, that's what you will, I mean, in the next month, that's when you'll receive the list of repeals. And there'll be folks here ready, you know, each, each repeal will also have a justification. So if there are any questions, you know, certainly, we'll be able to answer any of those for you.
Could, in terms of, just kidding, first time I've, I've been conscious of, of how this is going to play out. Is it possible when, when that list comes, that there maybe be some web-based resource where it would be easy to, I'm trying to hold down the workload on you, y'all. I mean, obviously, we don't want to upload all of the old rules. But is there some web-based thing where we could easily go and look at the old, the rules that y'all are asking for repeal?
Yes. I mean, right now on our website, all of our rules that we are enforcing are listed. Now, what we're learning through this process is there are some really old rules out there that we don't even have on our website. You know, just over the years, we hadn't captured them. So you could go right onto our website and look at the majority of the rules. But we can also make sure for any of the other ones that we are going to propose be repealed, that we could, I guess we could just, you know, send those, the additional ones to you in an email, because those are going to have to be loaded on, you know, uploaded to the report itself. So we certainly could provide, we could provide it in the form of an email.
Yeah. Just trying to hold down the workload for y'all, but also allow us easy access to look at it.
It, it won't be difficult to, to create a hyperlink for you in an email for the ones that are on the website.
That's right.
But the ones that aren't, you know, it'll probably be an attachment, a scanned attachment or something of that nature.
Okay. And so that'll be in the action agenda?
That will be in the action agenda for June, yes, it will.
Questions about this process? All right.
All right, thank you. And lastly, we, just this week, we got notification from the U.S. Department of Education of the Arkansas finalists for the 2018 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. We had three finalists this year. John C. Bookout from Hot Springs World Class High School. Did I say his name right? Dr. Hernandez? Pretty close? Okay. The, he's, Dr. Hernandez says he's an amazing saxophone player, too. Anika Mittal from Kip Blaville Collegiate High School. And Ashley Turner from Marmel High School. And Ashley was a finalist in career technical education. So we continue to get good news of outstanding students, outstanding schools. And I just announced that, so you can help us celebrate that, that recognition. And with that, unless there are any questions about anything that I covered or anything that I didn't cover that you want to ask me about, that would be the end of my report.
Thank you. All right. And finally, we're going to talk about committees appointments, liaisons, et cetera. We'll hold family engagement to the end, because y'all have a, a separate timeline associated with it. In terms of liaison reports, Ms. Zook, anything on either special education or Office of Public School Accountability?
Yes, let me read this to you. And I always want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Kaufman and her team for providing me a written report. The Public School Accountability Division has been working on the following projects this month. Federal programs onsite monitoring documents for all federal programs due to the, and it's due into the feds by July 1. Released Commissioner's Memo on Required Methodology for Title I. Jane Green and Bob Lester spoke at the Arkansas Association of Federal Coordinators Conference in Hot Springs, and planning for the Committee Practitioners Meeting, which is May the 18th next week. Under School Performance, the public review of the 2018 SS School Index Business Rules, which is part of the Commissioner's Memo, public comment period has closed. And team, the team will be posting the financial document to the informational documents webpage. The recognition awards spreadsheet submitted to the finance for payment, standards and system support. Y'all probably didn't know they had all these different divisions under her. Finalizing the 1718 accreditation reports, appeals, and final approval will be sent to the State Board in June. They're working on SaaS business rules and onsite monitoring document for new standards of accreditation. And the Equity Assistance Center, they completed Garland County desegregation onsite monitoring working on report. I know a lot of, most of you probably are aware, but Garland County is the one, I think there's seven districts over there who have been denied the opportunity to provide choice because of, and they specifically, even though the other districts, you don't get into race, but theirs is purely based on race, so they're trying to get out from under that. And then next SS Steering Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May the 29th, at 9:30 in the ADE auditorium, our newly done auditorium. And I assume that'll be livestreamed? Okay, it will be livestreamed. So if you want to watch Ms. Kaufman and Ms. Newton and the team perform, there they'll be. Thank you.
All right. Nothing on special ed this week?
No, we still don't have a replacement for Ms. Tyler. But that doesn't mean the team isn't working diligently every day and being very responsive and helpful.
All right. Great. Ms. Newton, anything else on, that was the, that was the SS, that was the SS story? All right. NASB, anything? Just the upcoming meeting is really for a new member, a new member institute, but we, that's irrelevant for us at the moment. And it's obviously, we do need to think about NASB liaison moving forward. So I'll, I'll probably via, via Kalisha, be reaching out to folks to see who might be willing to serve in that role, okay?
The only thing I'll, I'll add to that, just for whoever does take on the role, I'll be closing out over the course of this month, the grant reports for our deeper learning grant, just to make sure that the new liaison could feel confident that we close that grant in good faith. But I am going to have a conversation with NASB about the possibility of maybe some future grants tied to the family engagement work. And I'll bring that and discuss that in more detail as it's related to the Family Engagement Task Force report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Great. Couple of things on my front. I, it's not on the list, but one liaison role I continue to play from time to time is related to, to the implementation of our new state science standards. And I am part of the team that, the working group for advancing coherent and equitable systems of science education, which is a multi-state grant to implement our new science standards in an equitable fashion. And this working group is a lot of folks from business, higher ed, and then, of course, education folks led by the science team at the department. And, you know, this, the mission of this grant is really that, you know, that STEM education has so long, for so long, really been the domain of certain kids, that, that students of color have too, too often been left out of, of science education. Women, obviously, too often left out of, of science education. English language learners often left out. And other folks who have, who have not been thought to be ready to excel at STEM. And so this goal, the goal of this grant is really to say, you know, there's a rightful presence for all students across, across groups when it comes to STEM education and performance. And so, we met on Wednesday of this week, our quarterly meeting. And interesting, very interesting meeting in a couple of ways. A lot of conversation about how formative assessments really can be tools to, to ensure equity by, by, for teachers to really recognize where the gaps are in a classroom before the end of the year exams, but really using those formative assessments to equalize the playing fields. Lots of conversation, too, at this meeting about the ways in which we can use the culture, cultural aspects of, of different groups to really promote, to promote science education. So for instance, lots of opportunities when it comes to food culture within different communities to really think about the connection between that and health and other aspects of, of science. Really being conscious of embracing those culture, that, that, those forms of culture diversity, rather than treating it in a, in a different light. In Arkansas, that, that also might mean kind of a celebration of, of rural agricultural culture and, and really thinking about the ways in which, the way in which our Canzens in so much of the state are so tied to the land, and really use that to think about issues related to science. So that was interesting. What's also popping up is continued resistance to implementation of, of the science standards, particularly at the elementary level, but where there was very little science content historically. And this is a big culture shift for teachers at the elementary level. And there are certainly schools where the materials are not always present for teachers to use to, to do that well, because the new state science centers are really about discovery rather than just delivery of content. And that often takes manipulables and other devices that may not be present. So there are some challenges that are really showing themselves, especially in the youngest grades. I think we're going to need to be conscious of that moving forward and supportive of the science team to be sure that that professional development work can continue so that, so that kids get a, of all kids, get a good start in science education, so it really pays off later on. So that's a, those are some thoughts on science education. My other report today relates to FORWARD and several things on the FORWARD front this month. I mentioned last week, or last month, excuse me, the FORWARD Together conversations, which are really dinners, coffees, house parties around the state, really focused on what our Canzens want to see in, in public education. There are 16 of those conversations going on around, around the, around the state in each of the five FORWARD communities. I really appreciate, I know Ms. Zook is going, I think, Ms. Reith, are you, Ms. Zook, are you going?
Yes, we've been invited to come up for the-
P Ridge?
Bittenfield, is it?
P Ridge, I think P Ridge. Are you in P Ridge? You're somewhere. You're going somewhere. I, I know Ms. Chambers is, is also going, Ms. Reith. So I appreciate those of y'all who are participating in those. Three of those have taken place, 13 more will take place next week. So there'll be a whole array of, of conversations going on, and I think that's important. FORWARD is continuing to do work in all three of the districts that are under state control. We saw yesterday in Earl's report, the, the work with FORWARD there. Work ongoing in Dollar Way, especially in collaboration with some of the other partner organizations. And then here in, in the Little Rock District, the, at the, at the middle school level, the real focus on community partnerships with the business, between the business community and those, those middle schools. And so, that is important FORWARD work as well. FORWARD, as you, as we'll hear in just a second, has been supporting the Task Force on Family Engagement and Learning. And, and that's, that's been a, a focus of work in the past. And then also supportive of the Task Force on Student Discipline and, and there. And so, trying to support our work in those initiatives. So those are the highlights on the FORWARD front. I will try to have a more, I was, this was mainly through a phone call this month, and I want to sit down and really have a face-to-face and have a more full report from, from FORWARD next month about it, where it is now and what its future is. All good? Questions? Ms. Zook?
I have a question, sort of, that will tie into your science, but also, when sta, Ms. Kaufman, when standards, I know it calls something new now, but anyway, when, when they go out and they look, do they check about the, this, like, do they have the science equipment they need to do this? Are they teaching cursive and, you know, do, all these different laws that have been passed that we encouraging and wanting and the districts to implement? Is that one of the things they, in the newly designed, up-to-date standards?
Standards for accreditation?
Standards for, thank you.
And we are in the process right now of developing our monitoring tool. And that monitoring tool will detail all of the things that we will be looking for.
Okay, great.
So, and we'll make that public. We're just in the very, very rough draft-
Well, no.
-stages of doing that right now. And of course, those rules have not been finalized, but we're working in hopes that those will be finalized soon.
Is that one of the ones we sent on, on emergency rules?
No.
Okay.
They're out for public comment until May 15th, and then they will, then we'll assess to see if there are any significant changes or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Student discipline.
We had a, Ms. Lamb, Lori Lamb will be submitting our recommendations to, next week, on, I mean, next month, on these steps that we're going to use going forward, recommendation to the Legislative Committee to move forward. And I think we put those in a concise format that we can bring back to the boards and what initiatives we're going to take to move forward, to put those action items in place, as you ask. And so, she called in yesterday, and so she'll draft that report, get that to Doug, and we'll have that ready to submit in the next, on the next, the next board meeting.
So will that, will that be on the- So will that, will that be on the action agenda next month? Is that the expectation of?
I don't know. Commissioner, how?
Is there?
Yeah, depends on the recommendations.
Yeah.
Which, which, which we will look at from a draft form from her.
Okay.
So we're just trying to get some concrete information on what I, action I've based on the last few meetings, and then we'll decide how we'll proceed with that.
Okay. All right. So we'll see that on the agenda in some format next month.
Those will come to the board as, as recommendation.
Okay. Great. Look forward to that as well. Great. All right. And finally, Task Force on Family Engagement and Learning. And Ms. Reif, I'll let you speak for the task force.
Thank you. And as I commence with just a few words, I will ask Ms. Abels if she'll come up as well, because obviously a lot of this work, her and Ms. Reif have been leading so effectively, and I'd love for her to actually present the, the timeline itself. Well, the reason that I had asked Ms. Abels and Ms. Reif to put together this timeline for you all, I know that we've given you glimpses of, of the process thus far and the process of ahead, but I know that they have, as part of the work for CCSSO, actually convinced this into a simplified format, one that can help onboard a lot of different stakeholders and actors this process of this. And it just felt like, especially now that there's a clear vision for what the work of the remainder of this year will look like and even beyond, I'd ask Ms. Abels and Ms. Reif to, to put this together so that you all may feel informed as well as the state board of where this proceeds. I do want to extend an invitation. We will be fine-tuning this next week with our next formal meeting of the Family Engagement Task Force. A slight update from our, from last month, when, when we gave you all an update, there are four subcommittees working on this broader coalition of family and community engagement, two of which met prior to our last meeting, and now the other two will meet next week. And so we are going to meet again on the margins of that specific effort, and so hopefully we'll have even more to share next month. But already kind of catapulting a vision of ahead, since Ms. Dean is not here, I'll brag on her to also celebrate that she's agreed to chair this task force moving forward. We felt that's important in this moment to make sure that there's a continued commitment by the state board, and we've been very excited by that. And, and whether Dr. Hill knows it or not, Ms. Dean has voluntold him to become part of the task force as well in the various coalitions as a way of also integrating further the student discipline work into part of this, acknowledging that family and community engagement is a huge piece of being able to tackle the issues around discipline. And so Dr. Hill, thank you in advance for your service for that, and we look forward to your role in the task force. But I do want to say that even with that transition, there's still more opportunities. So that's the final reason for this timeline, a recruitment pitch. There is more opportunities for more of U.S. State Board members to be involved, whether it is through the subcommittees or the work. I do want to especially highlight next week's subcommittee meetings, an invitation to any of you to join those, as well as our task force conversation on the planning afterward. And then please take note in August, there will be regional meetings, just as FORWARD is doing right now, the Family Engagement Task Force will do there, and opportunities for you all within your community to hopefully be able to be part of it, but to also engage other stakeholders and help us engage other stakeholders in that process. I've made a longer-term commitment to the task force, one that they haven't rejected, and the commissioner has not either, and to which I am grateful for his magnanimous gesture of letting me, in my nonprofit role, continue to be able to serve and hopefully offer some contributions to the task force itself. But I, I do see this as the initiative that I've been most proud and humbled to be part of since I've been on the state board. And so to the very end, even Ms. Reif has me in June at a competition where they'll be lifting up some innovative best practices, and I'll be honored to, my last act officially on the state board, being a judge on that. And I can't imagine a more, a better way to honor what this experience has meant to be. But I do want to make a final call to action and then turn it over to Ms. Abels, to my colleagues, because my commitment to this task force, as I know for all of you all and even for the commissioners, is beyond just our roles at the state board, but it's about a culture change for our communities. And so all of our investment toward making this sustainable is, is one that I do think is an investment in our broader mission as a department. And so I did have some concerns this last month in that the FORWARD initiative, due to funding, had to cut the participation of Ms. Gina Dickey and her consultancy to the task force. And then, as you all know, the funds that were available for Mr. Monta Mayor from IDRA is also transitioning. So Ms. Abels and Ms. Reif are in a fundraising process, one that I've committed for the next month to try and connect them to some donors that can continue to make sure they have the resources and support that they need. And NASB ties into that, so that's the loop back on what I was sharing in regards to NASB. But I, Ms. Abels, met some donors in Detroit just this week who are also highly interested, and so I hope there's opportunities. But I know many of you all know the different foundations and groups that are invested in education initiatives, and so if there's opportunities here where we can make sure that there's some additional resources for Ms. Abels and Ms. Reif. Some challenges have already been identified, as well as opportunities, but some of those tie back to funding, and so we welcome the ideas. But they have my commitment to help fundraise to the very end, and if there's things that you all can suggest as part of that broader effort, as you all are about to see with Ms. Abels' presentation of the timeline, they have done a tremendous amount of work, but there's also a tremendous amount of work ahead, right? And this is just not one of those initiatives that can be accomplished in a year timeframe or two-year timeframe, there's a longer-term projection here. And I think we have an opportunity to really help fulfill what is ESSA vis-à-vis what we are fulfilling for our families and communities as part of that process. So, Ms. Abels, I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Megan Abels, Public Information Manager. To take you back briefly, I think we told all of you, we're going to use four different subcommittees for our state coalition. We've really tried to listen to the feedback of our stakeholders and how we, they want us to do this process. We kept hearing over and over again, no more than 20 on a coalition. When you have a project of this magnitude, it's hard to only select 20 people to bring you feedback. So we really started looking, and we said, we're going to do four subcommittees and have around 20 people on each of those subcommittees. So a couple, well, about a month ago now, we met with our first two subcommittees and really got some great feedback as to moving forward in this process. We originally had planned on having regional meetings in May, and they said, no. There's baseball, soccer, state tournaments, graduation, there's too much going on, you're not going to have a good turnout. Let's do it in mid, in September, early October, that's when we think you should do it. So we listened to what they said, and we moved those out to a time when they, they thought it would be best. We also had them sort a lot of, we took other states' frameworks that have already been created around family engagement and had them kind of sort those as to what they liked, what they didn't like, what they think may fit Arkansas, what they thought maybe needed to be reworded to better fit Arkansas. And we have taken those, and they've been typed out into what they exactly do want, what they're maybe not sure they want, what they do not want. And so after we meet next week with our next two groups, we're going to have tons of things on paper that are sorted to guide us into our next steps. Next week, we're meeting with our instruction group, which is really going to be based around that core instruction in the classroom, how you can engage families and communities in that core instruction, and also how we can better instruct parents to build them to capacity in their home and helping them instruct their child at home. So that's going to kind of be that conversation. And then the next day is going to be around culture, and that's the one I really would encourage you to come to. We're going to talk about those so important wraparound services that tie in Dr. Hill to that discipline that you've talked about. And we're bringing so many different people to the table that have connections, they're offering after-school programs, weekend programs, mental health, physical health, everything you can think of, these people are going to be at the table to tell us how we can provide information on those resources to all of our schools across the state. It's going to be a very meaningful conversation, and I would love for y'all to be there and hear that, because I think there are so many things going on that we just don't hear about. And if we don't hear about them, you know, some of our teachers are not hearing about them. So I'm really looking forward to that conversation. Once we have these four meetings and they're done, we're going to start hosting Zoom sessions to where we pull up and show them, this is what you sorted, this is what you told us you wanted in the framework. We want to be very intentional about the language of our framework. We want it to be easy to understand, easy to read. So many times, teachers get standards, and I know you all can relate to this, and they're like, I know I'm supposed to teach this, but what exactly does that mean? And we want to be very intentional about our language, because at the end of the day, we want parents to be able to look at this, you know, vertically and horizontally and understand too what, what, what that looks like from the district level and all the way to the parent. So that's a, that's a conversation that's going to come up via Zoom. What wording do you want us to use? How do you want us to format this so that it's easy to follow and easy to use? Over the summer, we'll be putting a lot of work in actually typing this out into a draft format. Then once we go into our regional events in September and October, we would like to have somewhat of a draft created to take to our regional events and then ask all stakeholders. We want everyone at the table, everyone in the community. Yesterday, we spoke, and we told those state board, our board members, local board members and superintendents, someone said, well, what do you mean? Who is a stakeholder? And we said, everyone in your community, that's a stakeholder. And so we want to make sure we really tie all of those people in to these regional meetings. And then we want to start talking about our toolkits. It's one thing to give a district and a teacher a list of frameworks and say, here you go, this is to help you, but it's another thing to say, here's this framework, but here are these toolkits that can walk you through step-by-step how to implement this in your classroom. So there's a tremendous amount of work to be done, but we're not alone, and we feel that. We value the state board committee that's helping us along the way in so many ways, and, and we value our stakeholders, and we are listening to what they're telling us, because who knows best, right? And we have had an opportunity to partner with some of our CCSSO partners that have some Callog funding possibility available, and we're going to look into that, which that would be, you know, very helpful moving forward, because we don't want to miss any opportunity we can to bring all the right people to the table. And that, you know, honestly, one of our challenges is bringing those parents. And when you go and you ask schools, what are your challenges? It's getting all the parents to come. It's hard for parents to miss work and come to a 9:30 to 2:30 meeting with us. It's hard for them to drive three hours across the state and come. And so we're learning, we're experimenting, we're asking. It's really making us dig deep into those barriers, so when we ask schools to do this, we can say, we faced that same barrier, and here's what we did to overcome that. So we're really working on that. By December, we'll have a completed product, good Lord willing. And we will go back to CCSSO in September and be able to take our draft, see where other states are in the process, get some feedback from them, feedback from our networks there, to really make sure we're not missing anything from a national forward-thinking, progressive, we want it to be a, a product that's going to last for years, right? We don't want it to be something that's created in three years, it's not timely anymore. So there's a, a lot that goes into that process, and we are working very hard on it, but we do appreciate y'all's support. And the 16th, please come join us. I think it will be refreshing. I think it will, you will leave like Ms. Newton can testify the day we met with all those stakeholders. You laugh feeling empowered, encouraged, and just so excited about the buy-in from our stakeholders in Arkansas already, who have been wanting something like this. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great. Ms. Hook?
Yes. Okay, so, did you all start with a measurable goal or vision? Or are, are these groups establishing the vision? Like, did you tell them, this is what we need, so as how to get there, or do, are they deciding what we need?
Well, we've told them what we know, what we've been told from family engagement facilitators and coordinators in our schools, what their missing piece is in order to be successful in their schools. So we're, we're setting them up to tell them what our challenges are, and then we're letting them tell us how to build upon that and address those challenges. So they are really leading the work from the ground up, yes.
And if I could elaborate?
Yes.
A lot of what initiated this was the, us being one of the pilot states, right, to develop family engagement standards tied to ESSA. So there is an output product that's, you know, we've, you know, our state will be amongst those, I get to pilot this for, for the nation. And then, and then one of the, the first acts of the Engagement Task Force was to do a draft mission statement, right? What does family and community engagement mean? And, and then they're still in the process right now of collecting some feedback, but that's been a really active and revealing process as well, by all of the stakeholders, where there was an initial effort by the department team to put something tangible down to get some feedback, there's been a really active and inclusive feedback process.
And, and I will say this, the first meeting, I felt like people came and they said, well, where is the product? Are we just going to polish it and provide feedback? And we said, there is no product. And then they said, well, what's it going to look like? And we said, that's why you're here. So I think that would better answer your question, is when they're coming, yes, we are giving them conversations to have to guide us in what we need, but we're not going to them with something already developed and then asking them to, to tweak it for us. So they are from the ground up creating this framework.
So like in a classroom, depending on the students, you have to teach the lesson one way to one group and one way to another. So each community will have eventually the, the goal or vision, and then how they get there will be individual boards and superintendent decision and teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Sort of what you're talking about?
And one of the very first things we've heard from each group, this has been very consistent, is this framework must be flexible so that each region of the state can make it work for their needs, their communities. And so we're trying to be very intentional about, we create it with true guidance, but with flexibility to make it right for your students, so.
So to go back to the, first off, thank you. This is awesome. And this is tremendous progress over, over this period. In terms of, of funding going forward, what, I appreciate you reaching out and continuing work, especially with NASB on this. What, what are we envisioning? How much is necessary to see through the process that, that you guys have laid out?
That's, that's exactly what the proposal process is right now for, for Kim and for Megan, to identify what the budget is that's tied to that. At a minimum, we, we are hoping for some ongoing consulting supports, so that's one of these, these individuals who played these moderator and facilitators. And one thing that may or may not have been fully known to the board before was covering the cost of Gina Dickey as sort of a moderator facilitator in this process. So that is one of the things that we are looking at, that the individuals that have helped us get here may continue to be resources to Megan and Kim moving forward. But then we have brought up things around, you know, when, when we start doing regional meetings, what travel looks like for family members who've already told to us, is there a stipend if I have to miss a day of work? Is there a stipend for me to attend a day-long meeting? Is there a gas stipend that gets us there? And right now, we've been able to engage, so for example, with some Latino parents, you know, my nonprofit was able to fund their gas so that they could participate and things like this. And, but what, as this goes to scale, we realize that the department having access to some resources, right, to ensure, especially like Megan said, parents' voices get to be present here, right? And, and acknowledge that there may need to be some resources available to support that.
And two quick things, we're really trying to model for schools how to do this on a minimal amount of money, because we, at the end of the day, don't want that to feel like an excuse for some districts not to do it the right way. We have reached out to some districts who said they're going to provide buses for their parents to come to these regional meetings. And we're looking for partners, but, and Ms. Kaufman can speak a little bit more on kind of what we're looking for budget-wise through Kim's work there, so.
Kim submitted a budget for $15,000, and that's to cover some of our supports that came in, like Ms. Dickey, and some of those things that were discontinued from other resources. So she's anticipating about $15,000 a year to get it moving forward.
It sounds like the original intent of FORWARD, and y'all have done more in nine or 10 months than... and y'all have done more in nine or 10 months than, than we have seen as a result, but...
Although I will, I will step in, FORWARD did support, did support through Gina?
No, I know that, I understand they, they loaned us a person, but I'm talking about getting it done, getting out there, working the process. So I applaud you for that and the efforts that went into it.
Ms. Kaufman?
Dr. Bar, I'd like to just really brag on this young lady and Kim Wright. Yesterday, our partners, AAEA and the School Board Association, ASBA, invited us to come and present and really talk about that system, within the six systems, to really talk about stakeholder engagement and communication. And these ladies fired up, school board members, who wanted to get up and share what good things they are doing and to network with each other, to do more. They're excited about going into my school info and learning more about their school, thinking through all six systems of the school. And so I just wanted to share with you, it was, it was a really a celebration and our partners were excited and they've invited us to come back and present to future groups. So she and Kim just knocked it out of the park.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
And you know, prior to that, we thought, we're going to have a tough audience and we were the very last session of the day, so they were going to end their day with us. And so we knew we needed to bring some energy to the room. And we were nervous if people would participate and share things from their district and these board members and superintendents jumped up and shared and then when they did, the room would clap and, and celebrate their success with them. It was, it was really an awesome moment, it really was, so.
That's when the spirit that has guided y'all's work all along has really been inspirational and that has really begun to pay off in terms of a, a vision for the future. So thank you all so much for all your work.
I wanted to share one more just beautiful story. One of the teachers on our coalition went back to her school and said, guys, we've been doing parental involvement this whole time, the word's engagement, what are we going to do different so that we engage? And so they sat down together, their leadership team, and decided they were going to host a May Day for their school. And what they did is they reached out to partners all in their county to come together that offer services during the summer, whether that's library programs, feeding programs, and they had booths set up. They had over one-third of their school population come with their parents to go to these booths and find out over the summer how their kids can keep learning for free, their resources in their community. And then the, the teachers set up booths with activities, projects, learning things they could do at home with their kids in the summer. And so these parents left with packets on how to help their kids grow where they didn't have that gap in the summer of no learning. And I just thought, if one meeting did that for that one teacher, where are we going to be in a year from now? And so that was really exciting, so. Thank you all.
All right. Any, any other things to come before us this month? All right, with that, we are adjourned. We'll see you back in the old haunt in June.